You get out.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to call this a regular city council meeting of the City of International Falls for Monday, October 3rd, 2022. First item on our agenda is to pledge allegiance to the flag if you all join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Please note that we do have Councillor Kraus absent. He did contact me this morning and he is not able to get out of work this evening, so his absence is because of that. We do have a couple of additions and a deletion on the agenda. If you guys would look at number one, we did have what was sent out, a job classification and compensation study. We're still going to be having that conversation, but because of client privilege, we're going to be having a closed meeting to have that discussion, so that would be what the change is there. Also, we have number 12 and 13. Consider Department of Public Safety temporary emergency contract for hazardous materials program. Chief Manasa will be discussing that with us later this evening. And demolition quotes for 816 Ninth Street. At this time, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councillor Holden.
Second.
We have a second by Councillor Bowler. Any discussion?
Mayor, if I may.
Please.
You know, the number one was a deletion and an addition, but the number two was added as well in relation to the pay equity report, so just making sure that you understood that was an addition as well in the motion.
Okay, excellent. It's defined by both of the...
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second. I will call the questions.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries four zero. We'll go to the minutes of September 19th, 2022. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Approve.
We have a motion by Councillor Bowler. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Councillor Deech. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries four zero. Next, we have the minutes of our special city council meeting on September 26th, 2022. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councillor Holden.
Second.
We have a second by Councillor Deech. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries four zero. Next, we go to a resolution for our transfers, payments, and claims and accounts payable. First, we have transfers to the 101 General Fund in $1,143.18, and that's coming from the 812 Lodging Tax Fund. Accounts payable, City of International Falls, regular claims, $332,895.50. Airport commission claims, $57,105.29. Airport project claims, $29,725. And airport runway phase three, $141,733.21. For a total of accounts payable of $561,459. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councillor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councillor Deech. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries four zero. Go to audience, is there anyone in the audience that would like to bring anything to the attention of the council? Hearing none, you'll have an opportunity again at the end of the meeting. We'll go down to the consent agenda. We have three items on the consent agenda. Approve the LMCIT liability coverage waiver form not to waive limits on municipal tort liability and authorized signatures. Approve the 2023 life and long-term disability insurance renewal, there is no rate change, and approve the 2023 Group B-CBS Medicare Senior Gold Health Insurance Renewal and Authorized Signatures. Chair would entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
So move.
We have a motion by Councillor Bowler. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councillor Holden, consent agenda does not get discussion, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries four zero. Just looking at folks that we have in the audience, I am going to bypass the part that we're going to do a closed session, just really quick to handle some business for folks that are in the room. I'm going to jump down to item number four. Consider the commercial loan program renewal for On a Wing Quilting, Valerie and Larry Shoblam, Tony Palm, please. Please come forward.
Set a stand.
However you want to handle yourself.
Thank you, Mayor Droba, city councillors. You know, I'm here on behalf of Valerie and Larry Shoblam, who own On a Wing Quilting. And back seven years ago, August 5th, they had a city loan program put into place, the loan amount was $24,999 as per the request. It has matured, and I know that most of the time, in most cases, a person doesn't want to have to renew those, but I'm hoping that you take into consideration their extenuating circumstances with the Canadian border being closed for two years. They had quite a few Canadian members that could not come across to use their products, not commented in here. They were shut down for a fair amount of time also during the road construction. I forgot to put that in there. But just the sales decrease of over, you know, it was over 50% from 2019 to 2021, that's right off of their tax returns. And of course, interest rates have gone up now, so a traditional loan with the credit union, the loan rate would be higher, the payment would be higher, and I ask the mayor and the councillor, council, to look at renewing that for another seven years.
Okay, Chair would entertain a motion to move forward with that.
So move.
We have a motion by Councillor Deech, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councillor Holden.
Any questions?
Is that to renew the full amount you're talking? Renew the $24,999?
No, they've paid it down. They've paid the 103 every month, like clockwork.
You just want the balance?
It would just be the balance, it's not a new loan amount, it's just renewing the balance.
Renew the whole loan or just okay?
Right, right, and it would still be in the, you know, the collateral position is actually better because all the loans are paid down more than what this loan has, so yeah.
Any other questions? I just want to say thank you for not using the word COVID, that was pretty neat. All right, so we have a motion and a second to renew that loan. I'll call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion carries four zero. Thank you, Tony. And next, we have a commercial loan program funding in the amount of $24,999.99 as requested by True Star Federal Credit Union on behalf of Temple Towers LLC to improve the former Masonic Lodge. Welcome.
Yes. Thank you again, Mayor Droba, councillors. And yes, I have Megan with me to help answer some questions on the project, but it sure looked like a nice fit when I started visiting with the current owners of the Masonic building, that the money they want to put into it, it seemed like it would really work well to utilize the city loan program. You know, it's been years since I've been here to do one, and now I'm here for two of them, so it worked out real well.
That's good.
And we're excited to be part of their project, it's going to be good for the community and, you know, as per the rules, you know, we've had Kelly Myers was there and looked it all over, and we've gotten the bids in place. And of course, the permits would be in place before it was funded and all those situations.
We're in the process of working with, obviously, permitting, we have worked with bids on from our contractors right now, electricians, HVAC, all, everything. We have a two-phase plan for the building, phase two, or phase one is the second floor, the Masons are still occupying the lower level. So phase one is to renovate the upper level into some apartment housing, which we know that there is a huge need in this community for rental housing, both short term and long term. So the plan is to put four fully functional, fully furnished, updated, modern apartments down there while the Masons are still occupying the lower level. And then, once that is done, we're going to do some great restoration work on the lower level. A lot of the aspects of the old Viking Theater from back in 1911, the beautiful orchestra ceiling and stuff are still there, it's just been hidden, so.
Excellent. Any questions from the council?
I think it's wonderful they're saving an old building. Old buildings in International Falls are beautiful. And that building in particular, if you look up, that is gorgeous.
We've got some really great plans and our partners are from here, they just don't currently live here anymore, so, and there are experts in this field. One of our partners, Kurt Mackel Downey, has been working in historic building renovation for about 20 or 25 years on board, so we are not without good experience, Dan.
Any other questions?
What will that be used for?
The upper level, we're going to do housing, rental housing. We have, I think, the plan is going to be currently for two studio apartments, a one-bedroom and a two-bedroom. And then the lower level is still to be determined as the Masons are still occupying that. So we're working on phase one, which is the upstairs, and then as the Masons start to phase out, we will come up with some plans regarding the lower level, but it will likely be some kind of commercial space, but we want to work on it to really do some kind of restoration to bring back the old Viking Theater feel to it.
Okay.
So you asked my question only slightly different. When do we find out what the next steps are? So fantastic, so.
We will find out when phase one is done and when the Masons have decided to find a different place to live. We're planning on making the whole thing ADA compliant and everything, phase two includes plans for an elevator.
Excellent, fantastic. At this time, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the commercial loan program.
So move.
We have a motion by Councillor Deech, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councillor Holden. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries four zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck in your endeavor.
Yeah, absolutely.
And Chief, did you have your officers here? Okay. Just check the piece here, we'll do that, if not, we'll move back right into the item number one. All right, Chief, if you want to come forward. Next item would be to consider a recommendation to hire Jay Taylor and Kane Koscheck as part-time patrol officers for International Falls Police Department effective October 4th, 2022.
Thank you, Mayor, council. As you'll see in my letter, we, after receiving a council approval, recently tested four applicants, interviewed all four candidates. The previous request was for up to three, but based on the fact that all four had full-time jobs with their varying schedules, we would be willing to hire up to four with your approval. We had three applicants pass the oral interview process. I'd also note that, obviously, due to one of them being my son, I abstained from all of the process, the application, testing, and hiring, but I am proud to report that he is one of them asking for approval to hire. Jay Taylor couldn't make it today, he had a previous engagement, but I've met with Jay also, and I feel confident saying he would be an excellent officer for our department. He has a lot of humility, very down-to-earth, I'm not sure if you maybe know Jay, but I've had the pleasure of talking to him quite a bit recently, and I'm very pleased with all three of the potential candidates and the two that I'm asking for approval to hire today, especially so.
Excellent. Well, at this time, the Chair would entertain a motion to consider the recommendation to hire Jay Taylor and Kane Koscheck.
So move.
We have a motion to hire both from...
Second.
Councillor Bowler. We have a second from Councillor Holden. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion carries four zero. Thank you. Welcome. All right, with that being said, we'll deal with the PERA and everything else at a later time. I'm going to go back to item number one. That item on the agenda is labor negotiation strategy, and under Minnesota statute 13D.03 subdivision one clause B, a portion of the meeting would be closed pursuant to such statute upon duly approved by the motion of the city council. At this time, I would entertain a motion to close this portion of the meeting.
So move.
I have a motion by Councillor Bowler to close the meeting.
Second.
We have a second by Councillor Deech. Discussion? City Administrator, can you just give us a quick discussion on why we're closing the meeting and what we're going to be discussing about, or why that we're meeting with Flattery and Hood concerning our pay equity study?
Yep, exactly. You know, we've been working on this report since 2019, and they, we've asked for extensions with the state of Minnesota. Our timeline is October 6th, so therefore, we need to be looking and discussing this today for moving it forward to the state of Minnesota management and budget by the October 6th date. And we have Brandon from Flattery and Hood on via Zoom here to walk us through our processes today.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to close this meeting. Before I take the question, those folks that are online right now, we're going to be taking you off. As soon as you have been removed, you're welcome to try to log back in, and when the time is appropriate for you to come back into this meeting, we will allow you back into the room. I would assume this discussion is going to be a minimum of 10 minutes, probably a maximum of 20, so just give you a heads up of that timeline. With that being said, the Chair would entertain, or the Chair would call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries four zero. At this time, we're going to close the meeting. There'll be just a little bit of time as we switch out the recording tapes and such.
Recording stopped.
So we did just have a closed session, we have reopened the meeting. At this time, we have two motions that are coming forward. The first would be to the approval of the Flattery and Hood job study and the BPS. I would accept a motion at this time to approve the Flattery and Hood Job Evaluation System and to determine the comparable work value of work performed by each class of the City of International Falls employees. Also, to authorize the city labor negotiation representatives to meet and confer with the exclusive representatives of the city employees on the selection of this job evaluation system. To approve the City of International Falls base pay structure. Approve the BPS will apply to all regular positions not represented by an exclusive representative, and it will clarify that the base pay for all employees in such positions as of the date of this motion will remain the same pending future city council action since such wages are within the BPS ranges. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
Mr. Mayor, should, can I just make a friendly amendment?
I would love that.
You referenced approval of the BPS for employees, but technically, we should add per three in the script, I think you skipped over that one, to approve the document called City of International Falls Base Pay Structure. I don't know if you read number three on that.
Yeah, I did.
Yeah, you did.
You specifically?
City of International Falls Base Pay Structures.
Okay.
Yes. So Chair would entertain a motion to approve those five items.
So move.
We have a motion by Councillor Bowler, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councillor Holden. Discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries four zero. And next, we have a, to approve the pay equity implementation report, authorize appropriate signatures, and submittal to the Minnesota Management and Budget. Chair would entertain a motion to do those items.
So move.
We have a motion by Councillor Deech, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councillor Holden. Discussion? Well, I would just say that this has been a three-year process. Our future city attorney was on the city council when we started this process, so with that being said, I'll call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion carries four zero. Thank you for your time, I greatly appreciate it, Brandon.
All right, thank you, Mayor, council members and staff, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, we'll go to a mayoral proclamation recognizing national pregnancy and infant's loss awareness and Remembrance Day, which is October 15th, 2022. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that proclamation.
So move.
We have a motion by Councillor Bowler, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councillor Holden. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries four zero. Items four, five, and six were handled earlier in the meeting. Item number seven, adopt a resolution for PERA declaration for Jay Taylor, part-time patrol officer. We have a motion by Councillor Bowler.
Second.
Second by Councillor Deech. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries four zero. Next, another resolution for PERA declaration for Kane Koscheck, part-time patrol officer. Chair would entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councillor Holden, we have a second by Councillor Bowler. Discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries four zero. Next, we have a resolution approving delinquent water and sewer accounts to be certified to the county auditor treasurer. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those.
So move.
We have a motion by Councillor Deech. We have a, we have a second by Councillor Bowler. Discussion? City Administrator, you want to just talk about really quick how, what the timeline is on this and what is being brought over, and it's representative of all three of them, correct?
Yes, and actually, I'm going to defer to Lisa, if you will, because I know Lisa has worked with them really closely. I believe the deadline is September 1st, or the end of September, and we need to prepare and put this document to the county for them to have and available to assess to the tax roll, and they collect it for the next year's taxes.
I was going to say, do you have anything, Dad?
All right.
So we have a motion and a second, I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries four zero. Next, we have a resolution approving delinquent grass and light invoices to be certified to the auditor treasurer. Chair would entertain a motion to move those.
So move.
We have a motion by Councillor Bowler.
Second.
Second by Councillor Holden. Discussion? Same process, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll call, I'll vote yes, motion carries four zero. Resolution approving delinquent rental licenses invoices to be certified to the county auditor treasurer. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councillor Holden, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councillor Bowler. This is new, we have never done this, so tell me how this process is and has everybody that has a rental now been moved into this program?
For the first year that we had begun this, the rental licensing invoices, if they were not paid, they were given an administrative fine and added to, on top of the first initial fee, and was there one more? Three notices, and if they weren't paid by that time, then we're assessing them.
And I know that this is separate from the assessment, then how are we working forward with those same rental licenses?
Still the same process, reaching out to them, trying to get in contact with them, working with them to come into compliance.
All right. At some point, I think we need to have another conversation on what to do, because, I mean, this isn't how you run a business. They're running a business of rental licensing, or renting homes or living spaces, and to be paying their bills through their taxes doesn't make sense, so we need to figure out something to either say you're not going to be renting in International Falls, or you need to be in compliance. We have a motion and a second, I'll call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes, motion carries four zero. Next, we have, Chief Manasa is going to talk to us about the Department of Public Safety and the temporary emergency contract for hazardous materials program. Chief Manasa.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try and keep this as short and as simple as possible. We have been contracted since 2015 to be a hazardous response team with the state, this has gone through several iterations of contracts. Last week, Betty and I, so when this originated, it was with Homeland Security and Emergency Management, it has transitioned to the State Fire Marshal's office. They have put out an RFP, so a request for proposal, to get on to the state system, which just went out last week, that's what Betty and I completed. Our current contract expired September 30th at midnight, they were hoping to have the RFP process bundled up by then to initiate new contracts for October 1st. There is some kind of issue at the state that I am unaware of, other than I got a phone call late Friday afternoon that we will be seeing paperwork soon, today, tomorrow, Wednesday, to initiate an emergency temporary contract to get us through the month of October. I have not seen that paperwork as of this time, so I'm expecting it tomorrow or Wednesday. They are putting out these temporary contracts to get us through the month of October, so they have coverage for hazmat teams across the state. I put it, I asked Betty if we could put this on this agenda to authorize signatures from the mayor and the administrator to sign that contract to get us through the month of October. If we wait until the next council meeting, that's the 17th, we're just about through the month, so that's what it is, temporary short-term emergency contract to get through the month of October, and then follow it up hopefully with a successful RFP that we submitted last week.
Chair would entertain a motion to authorize those signatures and approve that once it comes in.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councillor Holden, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councillor Deech. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, and we'll have some more information from Chief Manasa now.
No, I would just like to reiterate, this was not an issue on our side, we did not, we were not delinquent or late in any way, shape, or form, this is something that happened down at the state between what we see as the State Fire Marshal, the financial and legal and all that kind of stuff apparently was not on the same page, so this was nothing that we did, it's not a delinquency on our side, just for your information, so.
That doesn't happen at the state, it always gets done at the state.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, next, consider demolition quotes for 816 Ninth Street. Those were on your desk when you came in, all that stuff from Flattery and Hood, got mine mixed up. We had, we had four, three bids that came in, one was $21,600, one was $22,725, and another one was $43,950. I will hand it over to the city attorney, he has his name on this one.
Well, it really should be Jared, who should come forward and explain the situation, and I can answer questions and weigh in. We, this issue has arisen, Cody Service, who's the homeowner, has signed an authorization for us to do it, so we don't need to go through the court process, and has agreed that it would be assessed to the property, but there have been some issues with the property that caused it to be more expensive and more troublesome than typical, and here it's been explained.
So this has been a problem property for the last couple of years since I've been in this position. We've been trying to take steps to, you know, get the property into compliance. We've, this had a lot of issues and, you know, a couple months ago, that we, this was one of the hazardous houses that we brought to council.
of the hazardous houses that we brought to council for approval to take through the court system. I received a phone call last week from the neighbors concerned about some conditions of the home, and myself and Chief Manasa, some public works, Mike Wallace from Public Works, went over there and did an inspection of the property, and we found some things that need to be addressed as soon as possible. So I met with Steve. I reached out to Cody Service and just told him that, you know, we, this, this house needs to come down soon before it causes issues for somebody walking by, so on and so forth. So he agreed to forego the court process and signed a voluntary demolition. And as you can see, it's assessable to, back to the property. We have since did some things over the last week to get it ready for demolition. All that is going to be assessed back to the property also. But I'm hoping we can cross this one off the list. The low bid contractor's loaded up and ready to be there tomorrow morning, so I'm hoping we can put this one behind us and move on.
Chair would entertain a motion to accept the low bid and assess to the-
You got my motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Deitch. This needs to come down. Call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other business to come before the council? Okay, so I have, I have one thing, and I'll just bring it up in the mayor's report. Boards, committees, department heads, reports of the administrator?
Mayor, Council, I have nothing in addition this evening. Thank you.
Okay. City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, Council, pleased to report that did have some interaction with the attorney for the potential developer out in the multimodal, and she has indicated that within a few days, she's supposed to respond with the changes they'd like to our, make to our draft development agreement. And so hopefully, we'll be progressing to move forward on that shortly. And as we get their response, our committee can get together again and go over it. You know, the phone conversation we had a couple weeks ago was very encouraging, but then things stalled for a couple weeks, waiting for their attorney to get in touch with us, and she's just done that now. So hopefully, we'll be moving forward. I haven't heard anything negative at all. So kind of the ball's in their court, and we're just waiting for them to get back to us.
So then the, the process would be to have another meeting with the group that was appointed from the EDA president, and then we'll bring back a, a EDA meeting to approve that contract?
Yes, and, and hopefully, if we get something this week, maybe there could be a special, you know, a meeting at the, before the Committee of the Hall or something next week? Is that on, is Committee of the Hall on for next Monday?
Well, we do have a Committee of the Hall on next Monday, but we also have a EDA meeting at the second, second meeting this month. So I mean, the timing is almost perfect.
We could deal with it next Monday. If we get something from them, we could deal with it as soon as next Monday.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay.
All right. Anything else?
No.
That you'd be pleased to report that the city council just decided to tear down a building?
Yeah, yeah. Been working with Betty and the labor lawyer on an issue that's been ongoing, and have had a number of conversations today on that, trying to assist resolution of a situation that involved an employee of the city.
Okay. All right. We'll move on to department heads. Any department heads have anything to bring forward? All right, we'll go to the reports of the mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions. Anything, anything? I just had the, the one thing, we actually had a, a land use and legislation meeting where we had a good bulk of the department heads at earlier, and one of the things that has come up due to the county redoing some streets in South Falls is the detours. And I did speak with the police chief and the public works department. We're going to see if we can work with the county to try to get some better signage for the detours, and they're, they're going to look into trying to work through that. It's, I, I was contacted by two people, and I believe the city administrator had, had someone contact, so it is becoming a problem, but it's the best kind of problem. We're, we're getting new roads and we're, we're getting progress.
I drove through there. There was no detour. Just find your own way. That's all it is. It is. There's not a detour sign there.
No, and that's what I wanted to clarify, Mayor, if I may, is they're not detours. They are, you know, they're through traffic, but they're, you have to travel slowly and cautiously as through this milling and resurfacing process. They are not detouring traffic.
They did while they were working on, I mean, they, they didn't while they were working on it either, but there was no detour sign to this whole project.
There, there's some signage there, but there, there's not a true detour.
So we just, we, you know, the best thing is for those folks that live in that area to try to find a, a way to get around, but with that being said, we're going to see if we can't get some signage up to try to help the folks in that area. That's the only thing I have. We'll go to audience. If anyone has anything to bring forward? Hearing none, in your, in your packet, you had some correspondence from the International Falls Rainier, Rainy Lake Convention Visitors Bureau minutes, International Falls Recreation Commission Board minutes, and the Kutchin County Commissioners Draft minutes from September 22nd. Our next regular city council meeting is on Monday, October 17th at 5:30. This meeting is adjourned.